Web, welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission. I'll read the rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or development services department staff at five one five six eight nine nine four eight five for details on council hearings. An applicant will be given ten minutes to present the request. If applicants wish to share materials not submitted or already submitted with the application, please email them to planning@dm.gov.org so a staff host may be able to share them on the screen when you present. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Staff has attempted to compile a list of people who would like to speak on each item. Staff will first call on these people and then will open it up to anyone else who wishes to speak. To request to speak during the hearing, please use the raise hand function on Zoom webinar via internet or dial star nine on your phone. Once permission to speak is given, to unmute and mute dial star six on your phone. You will be required to give your name and address for the record prior to speaking. Also, we ask that you keep your microphones and phones on mute unless you have been given the chance to address the commission by the chair. The applicant is allowed five minutes for rebuttal if opponents speak. All comments are to be determined to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. Please know that typical accommodations may be limited by emergency requirements as issued by the state of Iowa and the City of Des Moines. Tyler, do you want to take roll call?
I do. Abby Chungith?
Here.
Rocky won't be with us tonight. Will Page?
Here.
Johnny Alsivar?
Here.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
I believe Dory won't be with us tonight either and Jan Fried, Caleb Burksen?
Here.
Lisa Howard? No, see her on here either. Steve Wallace?
Here.
Carolyn Jensen?
Here.
Francis Bogus?
Here.
Greg Watier?
Here.
And Greg Jones?
Here.
Madam Chair, we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And can I get a motion to approve the April one twenty-one minutes?
Holly, this is Carolyn. I move.
Thank you. Tyler?
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsivar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
And Greg Jones?
Yes.
That motion carries ten zero.
Thank you. I will now read through the consent agenda items. Number one, request from Nicholas Van Patten at sixty twenty Southwest McKinley Avenue for a vacation of approximately forty-eight point seven six foot wide irregular shaped segment of Southwest McKinley Avenue adjoining the entire frontage of the subject property to allow it to be maintained with the existing front yard area. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to move the item from the consent agenda and have it discussed this evening? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like this item pulled from the consent agenda? All right, that will remain on consent. Number two, request from Ost Real Estate LLC, twelve oh one Keyaway, represented by Mindy Ost for vacation of various adjoining surface, subsurface rights, A through F on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to move this from the consent agenda and discuss it this evening? Is there anyone on the commission that would like to pull this to discuss it?
Any city owner.
Seeing none, we'll move to the third item and that will remain on consent. Request from Michael and Dorothy Morrow for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for following type-two design alternative for property located at four three two five Southwest Thirty-first Street to allow construction of a six hundred and seventy-two square foot addition to House B building type in N three A neighborhood district, where the addition would be thirty feet from Southwest Thirty-first Street, which is twenty feet less than the minimum fifty-foot calculated average front yard setback. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to hear this item? I'll remind you that you can raise your hand or press star nine. Anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? That will remain on consent. Number four, request from R M Madden Construction, represented by Michael Madden for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for the following type-two design alternatives for property located at two six two five Easton Boulevard to allow construction of a new House C building type with an attached front-facing garage in an N X one neighborhood mixed district. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to hear this item? Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? This will remain on consent. Number five, request from two seventeen East Second L C, represented by Jake Christensen for review and approval of public hearing site plan, two seventeen East Second Street site improvements for the following type-two design alternatives for property located at two seventeen East Second Street and two hundred East Court Ave to allow renovation to the existing downtown general building type A through C on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item? Again, I'll remind you to raise your hand or press star nine. Anyone on the commission? Number five will remain on consent. Number six, request from Little Brother Construction LLC, represented by Jean Jones for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Little Brother Construction Phase One for the following type-two design alternative for property located at twenty twenty-five East Grand Avenue to allow renovations and change of occupancy for a contractor professional office used with an update of on-site parking and side landscaping with a waiver of the requirement to underground the existing overhead utility lines and maintain existing overhead lines. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to hear this item? Anyone on the commission? Hearing none, items one through six will remain on the consent agenda and I need a motion to move these items to approve the consent agenda.
Emily, this is Carolyn. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Yep.
Tyler, do you want to call the roll?
All right, Greg Jones?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Need to recuse on number five. The rest of them, I approve.
He's on five, all right. Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Johnny Alsivar?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
And Abby Chungith?
Yes.
So, motion to approve consent agenda items one, two, three, four, six, pass eleven zero with, uh, with item five passing ten zero one.
Thank you, Tyler. We'll now move to the public hearing items. It is my understanding from discussing with city staff that number seven and number eight have requested continuance to the May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. I'll read through both of them and then we can do a motion. Number seven, request from Hubble Realty, represented by Steve Mosley for review and approval of a Tenth Amendment to the Riverhood, River Woods Legacy P U D conceptual plan for property in the vicinity of River Woods Road and River Ridge Avenue to revise areas F, G, and H by eliminating the extension of River Ridge Road and reducing the length of the Grand River Drive cul-de-sac and increasing the open space conservation area. Also, to add allowance for fifty-foot lot with minimums and additional house typicals designs. And number eight, request from University Avenue Storage LLC, represented by Will Matthews for the following regarding the property located at nineteen sixty Claypool Street, A through C. These are both requesting continuance to the May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Can I get a motion? Or does anyone want to hear these tonight?
Emily, it's Carolyn again. I'll make a motion for the public hearing items.
All right. Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Thank you. Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsivar?
Yes.
And Emily Webb?
Yes.
Motion to continue items seven and eight to the May sixth meeting passes eleven zero.
Thank you, Tyler. We will now move on to the public hearing items. Number nine, request from Landmark Missionary Baptist Church of Surrounded Hill, represented by Stan Hagwood for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Landmark Missionary Baptist Church parking lot improvements for the following type-two design alternatives for property located at fifty-eight forty University Ave to allow site improvements for a civic building occupied by an assembly place of worship use, A through C. And Burt, city staff will be presenting the item.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Burt Ross, planner for the City of Des Moines. The site plan before you is requesting three type-two design alternatives. The first of that is to allow the parking lot to remain within the front yard area. The second is for waiver of overhead utility burial and then the third is for waiver of a fence frontage buffer along University Avenue. The subject property contains a small church use at the corner of University Avenue and Fifty-Ninth Street, so it's just to the east of the Windsor Elementary School. It's, uh, I believe it's probably built as a single-family house that's been converted to a church use over the years. They have an existing gravel parking lot in the front yard that they're wanting to pave. So, here's the site plan. You can see they would be paving that gravel parking lot and providing a total of seven new off-street parking spaces. But they would be asking, so they're asking to keep the paving in that front yard and then also waiver of the required fence buffer along this frontage here along University Avenue. And I would point out that the existing gravel actually extends further north than the proposed paving would be. So, they are making a situation, or the situation much better. They are retaining the existing driveway from Fifty-Ninth Street. And then the utility burial that I'll be talking about shortly is down here at the southwest corner of the site. So, just give you some, uh, bearings. Here's the lot that would be improved. I believe they'd be taking out this unused drive approach here and just maintaining use of that driveway from Fifty-Ninth Street. So, here's looking down Fifty-Ninth Street. You can start to see the utilities. There's a pole right here that brings electricity to the church and to the house immediately to the south. But it comes across Fifty-Ninth Street to this pole and then it goes to the site. So, here's looking more straight east from Fifty-Ninth Street. So, you can see the gravel parking lot. The new paving would stop generally right here, if you can see my mouse. And then they're asking for waiver of the required decorative fence that needs to be separating the parking lot from the sidewalk along University Avenue. So, a few more pictures. And again, here's, you can start to see that telephone or that pole right here that provides electoral service both to the church and to the property immediately to the south. Just a couple more photos. So, here's the estimate provided from Mid-American and they provided an estimate. The light blue right here is what would be buried. Again, it comes across Fifty-Ninth Street to that pole and then it goes from that pole to the house, to the south and to the church use. So, in this email here, they indicate that it would cost, sorry about that, forty-eight hundred dollars to bury everything and that would also have costs for that neighbor adjacent to the south. However, Mid-American estimate said it would only cost a thousand dollars to bury the utility line that goes from that pole to the church use. So, as far as the staff recommendation goes, we felt that it's reasonable to require them to bury that portion that goes from that pole to the church. That'd be the thousand dollars. However, we were not recommending that they be required to bury the entire pole since that would cost forty-eight hundred dollars and incur costs to that neighbor to the south that's most likely not wanting to incur any expenses they don't have to. So, our staff recommendation on part A, we have recommended approval to allow the surface parking lot in the front yard area. B, we found that it would be not reasonably practicable to require all utilities to be relocated underground. But we do recommend that the commission find it is reasonably practicable to require the relocation of the overhead line between the pole and the building at the cost of one thousand dollars. And then part C, we have recommended denial of the requested type-two design alternative that would allow waiver of that required fence along University Avenue. So, did anybody have any questions for me?
If I could, Chair, this is Jason Anderson with planning staff, just jump in quickly. I wanted to also, I think, I think Burt skipped over that staff has already approved a type-one to allow their drive, or excuse me, the parking lot to be set back closer to the street. Is that right, Burt?
Yeah, we normally, or the requirement is they have to stay seven feet back from that parking lot along University Avenue. And staff did approve a type-one design alternative that allows them to be within three and a half feet of this north property line here. And as Jason raises a good point, that is our reasoning for recommended denial of that fence requirement. We feel that that's a trade-off for having a reduced paving setback is that they should provide that required fencing in between as well as some shrubs.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, do any commissioners have any further questions for the staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll have the applicant present. The applicant has ten minutes and I just want to remind to state your name and address. Does app, is applicant present? And if so, can we read your hand or? Okay, yep, we can hear you.
This is Dan with Bishop Engineering, thirty-five oh one Hundred and Fourth Street, Urbankdale, Iowa. We've been the ones helping the owners with the projects here. He gave a pretty thorough overview of everything there and we are fine with all the staff recommendations. The only thing we would like to discuss is with that electrical, putting it underground, we'd like to see if it's possible to defer that to the time that the neighbor would be doing the same thing. It'd just be a cost savings thing for both parties. Since that pole would still be there, you're not getting any aesthetic difference out of it. We'd just like to defer it until that neighbor would be doing the same thing.
Okay, anything else? Do we have any speakers in support? Tonight?
We do have, um, Carol, go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name and address.
Hi, thanks. This is Carol Maher, M A H E R. I live at seven oh one Polk Boulevard, Des Moines, Iowa. Thank you for the, to the church and members for investing into the neighborhood to make this a more pleasing corner. It looks great that we're going to have one less curb cut and I hope that that will be cured as part of this project on the university side. And thank you for installing the sidewalk. From what I can tell on your plans that you're going to be extending the sidewalk on the Fifty-Ninth Street side. So, thank you for that. And for adding bike racks to your parking lot plan, greatly appreciated. I do have a comment on the fence that you're looking for relief on, on the university side. I would, it was stated that it was a decorative fence. I would say that that's maybe on, I don't know what the materials of the fence are, but I think that it's also a safety issue, especially if you're going to be three and a half feet from the sidewalk. That I would strongly encourage you to agree that the fence should be required. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any other speakers in support? In the public? Do we have any speakers in opposition?
Please raise hand or star nine if you're on a phone. Not seeing any.
Okay. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff at this point? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the commissioners for their thoughts about this.
Madam Chair, the applicant would get a rebuttal if they're in rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Daniel, or would you like to provide a rebuttal?
Go ahead and unmute yourself, Daniel.
You actually cut out for part of that there, so I think I missed part of what you were saying. But I think for the most part, we can agree to that fence as long as that setback is reduced to three and a half. We do agree, it's kind of a busy street and you got people going up and down there, so.
Okay, thank you. So, the public hearing is closed and does, do the commissioners have any thoughts?
This is Greg Watier. Hearing no discussion, I think I would move staff.
Thank you, Greg. I'm supportive of that motion as well. Tyler, do you want to?
Yeah.
Roll?
Start, yeah, start with Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsivar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
And Lisa Howard?
Yes.
The motion carries eleven zero.
Thank you, Tyler. Move on to our final item of the evening. Number ten, request from J Larson Homes LLC, represented by John Larson for review and approval of a preliminary plat amendment, Three Lakes Estate Phase Two for eighty-four point nine seven acres of property in the vicinity of three oh oh one block of East Army Post Road to allow remaining property in the Three Lakes Eastern, Three Lakes Estates Phase Two Legacy P U D to be divided into two hundred and eighteen one household living lots and sixty-four lots for semi-detached one household living. City staff Eric Lundee will be presenting this item.
Madam Chair, so this, this item is a preliminary plat amendment from the original preliminary plat that was done for Phase Two based on the original P U D conceptual plan about two years ago. This applicant went through the process of amending the P U D, which actually reduced a significant number of row and semi-detached units that were approved in the original, original P U D and also kind of made a more efficient street grid system and, and also added some house types or typicals that weren't included in the original P U D. So, the, the area left to be preliminary platted essentially is, is in the gold boundary. So, you can see, you know, original portions of the Phase Two along here were final platted and actually these lots are final platted here. They have also done a final plat that hasn't, that doesn't show up on the mapping yet down in this area. Coming off, I believe, southeast thirtieth or thirty-first. And then this entire area will get final platted with townhomes, rowhouse-type townhomes as they get built. So, this larger area here. So, what you might, when you drive out there, you may see streets already going up based on the original preliminary plat. And then this preliminary plat will reconfigure the remaining areas. This is a, a view of looking off of Lake Hill Drive to the north, just north of Brockway. Kind of looking out at the landscape, you can see some of the existing homes in the background here to the west, northwest. And then a lot of open area with some, some timber in there. This is, you know, panning a little bit more to the northeast from the same spot. Then this is looking up. I want to say it's southeast thirtieth. Just forgot myself. I'm sorry, that's Lake Ridge Avenue. So, you'll start seeing final, these lots are already final platted up to, up to the drive that enters the townhome development just to the left or the west. townhome development just to the left or the west. This is panning more to the east and even further east. You can see East Pine Avenue in the foreground and some of the grading that's occurred based on the previous preliminary plat. This is looking from East Army Post Road at the east edge of the development to the southeast, so everything to the right of the pond there would be in the preliminary plat. Looking more directly south. Little bit further southwest. And then this is even further southwest, you can see the existing trail coming off of East Army Post Road that goes to the developed portion of Three Lakes Estates Phase Two and Three Lakes Estates. This is looking more south from that same spot. And then this is at the northwest corner of the property we're, we're working with and across one of the existing detention ponds and you can see some of the homes up on the ridge there are right where everything is proposing to pick up and connect. I'll go through the plat document that was submitted for review. Now you can look at this and it's divided into little sub areas based on the different types of construction permitted by the already approved PUD plan, conceptual plan. Because this is so large, there's a cut line, so we're looking at the south portion. So this is the townhome area, this entire development lot for the townhome is already platted and then these lots along Lake Ridge Avenue are platted here, those, that's the street you saw in the photo right here, winding. So the remaining area to the east of that would be under this preliminary plat, two cul-de-sac areas. And then some north-south streets and east-west extension of Brockway, both of those would ultimately connect to land that would have to be platted to the east. This is the northern portion. So you can see this border here is the border of where the platted lots are already in existence, so those streets extending that we, the first photos I took off of this area right here. These streets would go north and south for the most part. And then this sort of circumnavigates the ridge line between the two regional detention ponds and then they would also be adding another pond in this area that would serve the new development and tie, and ultimately tie into the, the regional system here. And I, I can let the applicant get more into detail if there's questions on that.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Eric?
Yeah, I got a couple of other things. So this is a trail that, that's right, this is a trail that is part of a public Carlisle recreational trail that's being built by the city. It's actually, at, at a certain point, it will actually have an a connection to the north where this trail currently crosses at grade with East Army Post. There will be a project, public project that will take the trail underneath East Army Post, separated grade, so reducing traffic problems with pedestrians and bicycles that may cross there. And then I should also point out, this plat shows a future trail along the south. Maybe I'll zoom in so you can see that a little bit, but that's not in the current program right now. That's a little further out, I think, when East Pine Avenue might also be in the capital improvements budget. Based on that, the, while that's showing in the preliminary plat as a future improvement, it wouldn't be developed with this, these final plats of these areas here. They are proposing to sort of put sidewalk crossing at East Pine. You can see here there'd be a ramp and you could cross, but there wouldn't be any, until this trail would come, there wouldn't be any sidewalk in East Pine, so traffic is recommending that a five-foot sidewalk be installed along Pine for this development and that would serve in the interim. Now, the reality of it is that they would not connect to anything at this point directly other than the, the development internally to itself. Traffic is made that recommendation as a condition of this approval based on the moved DSM plan. My understanding is the applicant is, is going to present and, and make a request to have that waived until the time when the recreational and trail improvement would get installed with the street cross-section being modified. So right now it's in the staff report as a condition. The other thing that's a condition is the tree mitigation. They've, they've provided tree mitigation, but in the, in their submittal, but we want to make sure that's a condition at this point. And then also any administrative review comments. So staff is recommending approval of this. You might, I've had a number of communications, three or four, with people that got notice of this. There, there is some concern by neighbors. I think a lot of it is actually more based on the zoning issues that are already resolved through the, through the PUD conceptual plan approval in terms of what the product type is out here with semi-detached units and and where there's, where those are located. And I'm gonna jump up here. So those lot, those parcels that are being platted for that purpose are in this area here. And so there's some concern about the proximity of those to existing homes in the development to the west and to the amenity of the, of the drainage stormwater detention facility up in this area. But the, but what the commission is looking at tonight is strictly the, the plat, which is the layout of the lots, the streets, the public infrastructure and the shaping of the site. So they really is, they really would have to petition the council to modify the PUD uses in the conceptual, approved conceptual plan to really get that changed and everything they're proposing with this is in line with the PUD conceptual plan as it's approved and amended a couple of years back. So right now the commission really doesn't have any leeway to, to change the usages that are allowed in this PUD. Are there any questions? I'm gonna try to zoom back out here so that you have.
Eric, it's Will Page here. I have a, I have a question, please. When you showed some of the photographs of the area that was under development now, I didn't see any sidewalks. Were these not required?
So you're, you're talking about that's what's in here?
Yeah.
I'll follow back to the photo.
The photos were, yeah.
Hold on a second. And that, th- those are actually just being constructed, so I don't, typically they get added in with the home.
Yeah, here, these were the ones I was looking at.
Yeah, so, so what would normally, so they've put in the extensions like at the corners and then you see right here where I've got my cursor a little bit. So when those lots start building with those homes, if they put the sidewalk in now, it would get, you know, actually get damaged by the construction of the homes. So the typical thing is for the home, when the home goes in, that's when the sidewalk is extended, but the preliminary plat shows the installation of those to, to have a basis for how those are put in.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Eric, thank you.
If there are no further questions for Eric, we'll go to the applicant. Applicant, you have 10 minutes to present. Just a reminder to state your name and address. And you can, if you're having trouble, raise your hand or star nine on a phone.
And I have the, the extra drawings they sent me for their, their use in their, in their discussion.
Okay, perfect.
This, can you hear me? This is Ed Arp.
Yes, we can. Thank you, Ed.
I'm with Civil Engineering Consultants. We're the firm that's prepared the drawings, representing Jay Larson Homes.
And, sorry, the address.
Oh, 2486 Street, Urbandale.
Thank you.
Eric's identifying job of presenting the project. We've been at this for a little while. As he mentioned, we, a couple of years ago, we went through an update or amendment to the PUD. Reduced the units by quite a, quite a bit, but we think the, the layout works better now. It makes more sense for what the market is today. And really, I, I guess I'll say I don't have a whole lot to add to what Eric's presented. The only thing I'll probably speak to is the sidewalk that is to be put along Pine Avenue. We're not against sidewalks by any means. The problem we always run into is Pine is still in a rural section, we call it, so it's a kind of like an old gravel road. It's, it's got blacktop on it, but it's like an old gravel road that sticks up in the air and then there's ditches on each side. So it's, it sets up quite a bit higher than the right-of-way on either side of it. And we really don't see how we would be able to build that, a, a five-foot sidewalk at this time. We run into this every once in a while where it's very difficult. If you look at the drawing that Eric's put up there, Pine is running left and right on that drawing. And the entrance into Three Lakes is in the middle. We're showing the typical sidewalks within the development and crossing the, the public streets that access it. If you look, if I was to show an aerial, every street that comes out to Pine to the west of us has done this exact same thing. We understand why they're asking for the sidewalk, however, it would be fairly impossible to build it at this time. In some sections, it would be way down below the street in the ditch and in other sections, it would be way up above the pavement of Pine. So we really think it, because of there not being a schedule for the improvement of East Pine at this time, we really feel like it should be deferred until there's an actual urban section of right-of-way built when Pine Streets improve. The, the section you see on the left shows existing grade of Pine sticking way up above the, the grades on either side. And then the section on the right shows in some instances the existing Pine sits down. And so there's side slopes that go up from either side of the ditches, really not lending itself to being able to put anything in as far as a sidewalk. So with that, I'd be happy answering questions. It's just one of those things where we're not saying the sidewalk shouldn't be there, but it's just that we would not be able to build it with the condition that Pine is in today.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions from anybody? All right, any speakers in support? In the audience? If so, raise your hand or press star nine on a cell phone. Any speakers in opposition?
Again, if you're in opposition, use the raise hand function or star nine on your cell phone. I'm not seeing any, Chair.
Okay. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? And I would normally give an applicant rebuttal, but I don't think it's necessary. So I'm gonna close the public hearing. Did the commissioners have any thoughts?
Would it be of assistance if we flip to the slide that has the staff recommendation on it?
I think so, yeah. Yes, let's do that.
There you go, Eric.
So, this is Francis Bogus speaking. I would move staff except for number three and I would defer that until a later date. I just think that at this time, I agree with the applicant's position that it's really, would be financially burdensome to put in a sidewalk at this time that's not connected to an improved urban street.
Francis, it's Will Page again. I have a question for staff along that line. What does defer to another future time mean staff, if anything?
Well, I think the way that, I think that's sentiment, but the way the motion is, it really strikes that requirement. The way I, the way I take Francis's sentiment though is that that street project is something that is gonna at some point be in the CIP. It would be constructed at that time, so that's kind of the deferral. It does alleviate the developer of, you know, unless there's some sort of assessment of, of having to participate in, in that, but you know, that's also the trade-off of recognizing there's some great challenges there.
So in other words, this is another one of a catch 22 or catch whatever in, in terms of sidewalks in the city of Des Moines, is that correct?
Well, this is Eric Lundie, Senior City Planner. One of the things in this this plat, there will be bonds that are associated with the sidewalks that are shown in the plat. While we may not ask them to build them immediately with the, the final plats that, that sort of join the sidewalk areas on East Pine, one of the things we could do is build the, build the cost into the bond. Now, the, the negative aspect of that is down the road, if they've done everything else and they still haven't done anything with East Pine, you know, they will be coming back to ask for release of that because they don't want to hang on to the bond leftover for that little, you know, short portion of sidewalk that would be left. But, but certainly if you're trying to ensure capturing the developers' contribution, it could be included in the bond.
Emily, this is Greg. Emily, this is Greg Jones. This is the same problem we always have, but I agree with the developer that if we don't know what the profile is of Pine Avenue and establish that, there's no way we can put the sidewalk in at the right place. So to me, if we could have a bond, even if it goes for a while, if the city hasn't decided and put East um, and put East Pine Avenue in the CIP, um, at least if we'd have a bond for it now, we could release it later and we hadn't lost anything. So I think, um, I guess I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to Francis just to include that provision.
I'll accept that amendment.
All right. Thank you, Greg and Francis. Um, this is Emily Webb. I would also support that. So I think we can, um, take the, take that as a motion and see where it goes.
All right. Uh, Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Altsivar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
And Lisa Howard?
Yes.
That motion will carry eleven zero.
Thank you, Tyler. All right, I'm going to, um, close the public hearing. That's the end of the agenda items. Are there any committee and directors reports?
On the, uh, this is Jason Vanna, so with staff, on the director's side of the reporting, um, I did want to share with the group that we are, um, projecting to do some council workshops in May on amendments to the zoning ordinance and then beam before you, uh, hopefully, um, at that first meeting in June, starting that, that process. Uh, but, um, you should see more information from us as, um, it unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Madam Chair, this is Eric quickly. Um,
Yep.
But just a reminder, I know I sent out an email, but we are scheduled to be returning to live, uh, boards and commissions meetings on the July first Plan and Zoning Commission. So, um, I don't know if everybody caught that email that was sent out, but I just wanted to sort of bring that up as well.
Eric, will there still be the option to call in or is it, will that be discontinued? We don't have all the logistics of that figured out yet, um, how we're going to handle the, um, how the meetings operated, um, is still being sorted out. And that's part of the reason the boards and commissions are a little bit later than the council needs.
Yeah, and I know that in the past, Greg, um, we made arrangements when we needed to meet quorum for somebody that was out of town or something that was able to participate. Um, and I know that you had inquired about that being possible. I know we can manage, uh, at least one through the system. Uh, so I think we'll have to have that conversation internally to see how we work on the logistics of that if, if it's going to be a scenario where a commissioner is out of town.
Well, I am special, you know.
In a good way.
Yes, thank you.
Right. And I, I know you had agreed to stay on with some, you know, consideration that you may have to be remote.
We're, we're still sorting this out and we're going to do the best we can to try to accommodate folks and, and also accommodate social distancing and, you know, it, unfortunately, we just don't have it all sorted out to share with you tonight, but, um, do know that it is, you know, we're a few months away from it happening.
And we'll take into consideration your question, Greg, that there may be some desire for remote participation from time to time.
Sounds great. Thanks.
All right. If there's nothing further, um, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Or do we need one?
I don't think we do.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
You can just gavel it.
Have a good evening. Enjoy the weather.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Great job, Emily.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.